Order for Monday, April 25th, I'll rise for the pledge.
I ask that we just take a moment of silence for Crystal Burns, Moore, and the entire Moore family as they lost their loved one this past weekend. Thank you.
I would like to remind members of the audience, if you wish to speak in public expression, there's a clipboard up here that you have to sign, and you're allowed three minutes to address the council at the end of the meeting. With that, Clerk Golick will call.
Alexander.
Present.
Spitali.
Here.
Vines.
Here.
Kalwinski.
Here.
Torres.
Here.
Tyler.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Rakos. Warpo.
Here.
Let the record show all nine members present, one by Zoom, eight in chambers. Kevin, Mayor's address?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, Council. I'm here on behalf of Mayor McDermott tonight, who sends his regards, and as many of you know, he's been moving around the state. In fact, in the last week or so, he's been to South Bend, Fort Wayne, Indianapolis, Lafayette, Terre Haute, Evansville, New Albany, and Rising Sun. He wanted me to make sure everyone knew that even though he's been out of City Hall a little bit, he was in the office both Saturday and Sunday catching up. Also, tonight, he's in Indianapolis on city business with city staff, preparing to receive an award and speak in Carmel tomorrow at the Greenway Foundation Fourteenth Annual Luncheon related to the city's bike trails and greenways. Just some quick notes and some updates. As many of you know and many of our residents know, construction is continuing throughout the city, and it's construction season kind of in full force. It's good news, of course, but it can be a bit of a traffic castle where people trying to get around town. That would include Holman Avenue through downtown, Kennedy Avenue Business District. NICD continues its preparation for the South Shore-Westlake Extension. Anybody who lives on the west side of town, from probably about Goslin all the way to the river, knows about that. Hoffman and Chicago Avenue continue their construction. The Cayman Avenue Bridge that's going to go over Cayman Avenue at River Drive at the Munster border has begun. That project, of course, has a million dollars that was given to that project from the Little Cal River Basin Commission. And so, it's an exciting time to see so much investment in the city, and it will continue, I believe, throughout this year for sure and into next year at least, and probably even into 2025 on some of these projects. Festival of the Lakes is almost fully announced. Acts for Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday have been announced by the mayor, and Saturday and Sunday should be able to be announced soon, so we're looking forward to that as we get into warmer weather and festival season. I wanted to give a little bit of additional information to what was given by the Chief of Staff at last council meeting regarding the Columbia Avenue fence. There, I want to be clear to let the council know that we do have an easement, an easement in favor of the city signed off by each of the property owners, so that we do have access to that, and that maintenance will be the city's, but we won't be going on private property. I think there was a little bit of a confusion over, it's still private property, but we have an easement, so it's a little of both, but I wanted to make sure that everybody understood that. The city continues to invest in additional LPR cameras through the police department. They are now updated to the next generation, which are clearer, and just as, kind of like with your laptop, right? Every eighteen months or two years, you need a new one to get to the better technology. Same thing with LPR cameras. That's occurring, and that's exciting because they continue to be one of the best crime-fighting tools that we have in the city, along, of course, with our policemen and women that continue to patrol our streets and keep us all safe. Some exciting news about Jacob Square. The playground at New Windridge Park is nearing completion this spring on Thornton, and that will be the first park in the Jacob Square neighborhoods. That's pretty exciting for everyone, and really exciting for that part of town as we continue to look to redevelop that area. And I know that the Planning Department is continuing to work on trying to aggregate lots that the city owns and make those available for new housing through both United Neighborhoods Inc. and private developers. We have some interest in that, and that'll be something that's going to happen as we move through 2022. IT has, this is exciting for the council. The IT department has quotes for council chambers upgrades, and I believe, and those, of course, are from the ARP funds that previously were passed by council, so that's something that's going to happen this year for sure, and I believe that IT will be reaching out and meeting with, I think, the council president in the near future on that. The Controller's Office is continuing meetings regarding citywide software upgrades that will modernize everything from dog licenses to inspections and bring us into maybe the twentieth, late 20th century, as well as the 21st century, and that's happening. And those, that's going to, actually, a 24-month project, so it's just starting, and I know that Megan and her staff have been at hours and hours of meetings every week. It's ongoing. So, Phase Three Energy Savings Program, excited to announce that some work has started on City Hall to make this place a little more energy efficient, so it's not, so you don't have to go to the hallway to get cool in the, in the, in the summer, and then in the winter you boil because the radiators are on. So, that's getting under control. Also, something that's a little bit interesting, new windows were put in at Central Fire Station, and to much acclaim, the firefighters have said that it's become much more quiet at Central and climate-controlled, so that's exciting. Station, by the, speaking of fire, speaking of the fire department, Station Two will be bid out this spring with a fall 2022 anticipated start date. That's all I've got. Of course, I'm open to any questions. If you have any, I'll be happy to try to answer them on behalf of the mayor.
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
Kevin, what, regarding the dog licenses, is that going to go online, or how, what is IT doing with that?
Yes, they'll hopefully be online, so you don't have to worry about going to the window to pay your $10 or $5 or whatever it is.
Okay.
Yes, that's one of the things that'll happen. Not immediately, but when this software upgrade goes through, it'll also, like, the inspections department, when the inspectors are in the field, they'll be able to have handheld devices that will help them inspect, so it's all going to really just upgrade where we are electronically, and I know Megan's excited about it, and she's really been putting in the hours to get that done.
Go ahead, Councilman.
I, Councilman Kalwinski. When the build for Number Two would happen?
We hope, if all goes well, my understanding from the city engineer is that drawings are at the 90% phase. We're waiting for those final drawings, and then it can go out to bid, and then if bids come in, hopefully, as we expect, I know that the city council passed as part of ARP funds, funding for at least hopefully part of, or a majority of that project. We believe that the bid will be let and construction will begin still within the 2022 construction season, so probably, you know, I guess earliest would be maybe July. More realistic would probably be later in the year, provided that we have the funding.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Anybody else?
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Item number four, approval of minutes.
President.
Councilman Spitali.
Make a motion to accept the minutes for April 11, 2022, and be placed on file, please.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Spitali, seconded by Councilman Emerson. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes, let the record show. The motion carries nine in favors, zero opposed. Item number five, approval of claims. Councilman Rakos.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Rakos, seconded by Councilwoman Vines. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos. Warpo.
Yes, let the record show. The motion carries nine in favors, zero opposed. Item number six, public hearings. There are none. Item number seven, communications.
Mr. President.
Councilman Kalwinski.
Received a communication that the Pulaski Park Neighborhood Association will hold its meeting on Tuesday, April 26th, at 6:30 p.m. at the Hammond Mohawks, and a second announcement from the Mohawks is that the Mohawks are planning to hold their North Hammond Memorial Day Parade on Monday, May 30th, and it'll be the first time in several years because of the pandemic, and it'll be on Monday, May 30th. Staging will take place at 10:00 a.m., and the parade will kick off at 11:00 a.m. Staging will occur on Baltimore near the Cavalier Inn and the former Roller Rink. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything on the communications? Does anybody else have anything on the communications?
Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
This Thursday, from 4:30 till 5:30, I will be at Tanglewood Apartments. I'm trying to just get more updates about projects that we're working on across the district, and so we're doing this, kind of, not to copy the mayor, but Councilman's night out at Tanglewood Apartments, their clubhouse, on Thursday, April 28th, from 4:30 to about 5:30, and then also next week, in conjunction with the Hammond Parks Department and the Ministry Alliance, will be hosting a peace and prayer walk, which will take place at 6:00 p.m. on Wednesday, May 4th, at MLK Park. Thank you.
What time?
6:00 p.m.
Does anybody else have anything on the communications? Does anybody else have anything on the communications?
Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
Sorry, I know I announced it at the last meeting, but once again, the school city of Hammond is moving forward with their renaming of Maywood Elementary to honor Annie Burns Hicks. That'll take place at 10:00 a.m. this Thursday, and she will be in town to help celebrate that, and then on the same day, which is April the 28th, at 6:00 p.m. at Morden High School, they'll be showing the documentary that Roland Parrish put together, detailing the story and the fight that Ms. Burns Hicks went through to become the first African-American teacher within the city of Hammond, so encourage everyone to come out to both of those events and honor a living legend from our city.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything on the communications? Does anybody else have anything on the communications? Hearing none. Communications are now closed. Item number eight, committee reports.
President.
Councilman Spitali.
Councilors of the whole is going to bring out ordinance 2215 for final passage.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, I do have a capital improvements report and Crime Watch announcements. Capital Improvements Board met on Monday, April 19th. We received a report of second-quarter gaming dollars in the amount of $2,568,245. At this point, 1.425 million is unallocated. We approved nine, $9,202.18. This was our portion of an 80-20 match for Chicago Street Phase One Change Order 16 through 19, which is related to underground utility conflicts. We also approved $600,000 for the 2022 Sidewalk Program. We also approved a change order, number one, for Holman Avenue, Phase One, in the amount of $30,638.43 for unanticipated underground foundation and an underground vault that each needed to be filled. The next meeting will be May 2nd, beginning at 5:00 p.m., with a work-study session at 4:30 p.m. that same evening. The upcoming community and Crime Watch meetings on Wednesday, May 4th, Edison Community Watch will meet at, oh, I guess he likes that announcement. Edison Community Watch will meet Wednesday, May 4th, at 6:30 p.m. at Edison School. Harrison Crime Watch is not going to meet their regularly scheduled meeting, which would be May 3rd, because that's Election Day, so their next meeting will be on June 7th, that is a Tuesday, at the VFW on Holman Avenue. Hessville Crime Watch will meet Thursday, May 19th, beginning at 6:00 p.m. at the Gene Shepherd Center. Irving Community Watch will meet on May 6th at 9:15 a.m. at Irving School. Wedding Robertsdale Crime Watch will meet Thursday, May 12th, 6:30 p.m. at Calumet College. As usual, it doesn't make any difference if you live in the area or not. Please feel free to attend a community or Crime Watch meeting. You would be surprised the amount of information that you can get to protect both yourself, your family, and your property. And never be afraid to call 911. They would much rather receive a call about something that turns out to be nothing than just ignoring something that could be of consequence. So, please call 911 if you see anything suspicious, because community is not just about me, it's about us. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything on the community reports?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Alexander.
I just want to put a reminder out there that next meeting, we will have our scholarship recipients in the building to receive their awards from our last meeting.
Anybody else?
President.
Councilman Spitali.
Councilwoman, I was just wondering, when those people's names were picked, who tells the schools who they were?
The ladies that were here last week, Ms. Deminsky and I can't, I don't want to say her name wrong, they have informed them of that.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have anything on the committee reports? Anybody else have anything on the committee reports? Hearing none. Committee reports are now closed. Item number nine, ordinance, third reading and final passage.
Ordinance 22-15, sponsored by Councilman Spitali, and ordinance creating a new fund, Fund Number 2465, for the City of Hammond Police Department for FY 2022 Stop Armed Violation Enforcement from the Save Grant Funds.
President.
Councilman Spitali.
I move for final passage of 2215.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Spitali, seconded by Councilwoman Alexander. Is there any discussion?
President.
Councilman Spitali.
An established new account, 2465, is dedicated and created for the City of Hammond Police Department for the Stop Armed Violation Enforcement Grant Fund. The police will be targeting stop-arm violations and unsafe driving around school buses. Thank you.
Does anybody else have any other discussion on it? Is there any other discussion on the issue? Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos. Warpo.
Yes, let the record show. Nine in favor, zero opposed.
President Warpo, that concludes the ordinances for final passage.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Item number 10, introduction of ordinances.
Item A, ordinance 22-17, sponsored by Councilwoman Vines, and ordinance to appropriate monies into the 2022 Gaming Fund.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for first and second reading of 2217, refer to council as a whole on May 23rd, with a committee meeting at 5:15, and a public hearing also on May 23rd. Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Vines, seconded by Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
This is simply moving unspent monies from 2021 to 2022.
In the Gaming Fund?
Yes.
Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call on the motion.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes, let the record show. The motion carries nine in favor, zero opposed.
Item B, ordinance 22-18, sponsored by Councilman Spitali, and ordinance creating a new fund, number 4409, known as the Hammond Police Capital Equipment Fund.
Mr. President.
Councilman Spitali.
Move for first and second reading for 2018, with a meeting set for May 9th, 2022, at 5:15, and council as a whole.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Spitali, seconded by Councilman Emerson. Is there any discussion?
President.
Councilman Emerson. I'm sorry, Councilman Spitali.
All right. State Board of Accounts have recommended the creation of a Police Capital Equipment Fund. The new fund must be created for the City of Hammond for 4409 Police Capital Equipment Fund. That'd be for two first and second reading.
Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Clerk Golick, roll call on the motion.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos. Warpo.
Yes, let the record show. Nine in favor, zero opposed. The motion carries.
Item C. Ordinance 22-19, sponsored by Councilman Tyler, and ordinance to amend ordinances 4109, 4298, 5039, an amending ordinance, 8591, otherwise known as Chapter 121 of the Hammond Municipal Code, as it pertains to the prohibition of retail sales of dogs or cats by pet shops and other conforming revisions to animal provisions within the Hammond Municipal Code.
Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
I move for first and second reading of 22-19, with a committee hearing set for May 9th at 5:15 p.m. with the Animal Control Committee.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Tyler, seconded by Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
As stated, this is really a consolidation of several of the pet sale ordinances that we have on the books, and it clarifies it, given that we haven't amended this. I think corporate councils say it since the late 80s, so it was time for us to revisit all of the ordinances that we have on the books concerning the sale of dogs and cats in our city, and as of January 3rd, 2023, the sale of dogs and cats in our city will be prohibited if this ordinance is passed. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
I see it mentions retail shops. Does it also prohibit individuals from selling dogs and cats? There are several people that residents don't have a shop. They just, dog had a litter, and they sell them individually.
So, breeders would still be allowed to sell, but this prohibits the sale from those actual retail shops within our city?
Just pretend.
And they have to be licensed, of course.
So, they get a license from Animal Control or from the controller?
For the breeders?
For breeders, yes.
Breeders would have to get a license. I'm not sure if it's through Animal Control, but through AKC if they're dogs, and I'm not sure what.
Yeah, Animal Control no longer does the licensing. Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos. Warpo.
Yes, let the most, let the record show. The motion carries nine in favor, zero opposed. Before we move on, Councilman Tyler, you know what he's saying? They want twin sisters.
President Warpo, that concludes the introduction of ordinances.
Thank you. Clerk Golick, next item on the agenda is resolutions.
Item A, Resolution 22R-08, sponsored by Councilman Tyler and Councilwoman Alexander. A resolution recognizing Annie Burns Hicks for her contributions as the first African-American teacher within the city of Hammond.
Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
I make a motion that we amend resolution, or amend the agenda, so that we're voting on Resolution 22R-08A instead of 22R-08.
Second.
Do we have to introduce the original resolution first and then amend it? Clerk Golick? Okay, so we need to introduce the resolution first and then the amendment. So, the motion's been made to pass Resolution 22R-08. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Councilman Torres, was it? Did you second that?
Yes.
Yes. Oh, Councilman Spitali. Okay, so the motion's been made and seconded. Now, Councilman Tyler, is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, I ask that we, once again, amend Resolution 22R-08 in its entirety into 22R-08A.
Second.
Motion to amend 22R-08 with 22R-08A has been made by Councilman Tyler, seconded by Councilwoman Alexander. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion on the amendment? Is there any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call on the amendment.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos. Rakos.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes, the motion carries nine in favor, zero opposed. Now, is there any discussion on the resolution as amended?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
I ask that Clerk Golick read the resolution in its entirety.
Whereas Annie Burns Hicks was born to Albert and Mary Burns in 1937 as the oldest of 13 siblings in Mississippi and later moved to Hammond, Indiana in 1944 after her father witnessed the public lynching of two young black boys. Whereas, Mrs. Burns Hicks attended Maywood Elementary School and graduated from Hammond High School in 1954. Whereas, Mrs. Burns Hicks graduated from Ball State Teachers College, now Ball State University, in Muntz, Indiana in 1958 and eventually obtained a master's degree from DePaul University in Chicago, Illinois. Whereas, she began teaching 5th grade in Gary, Indiana in 1958 and in 1959, five years after the Brown versus Board of Education decision. Mrs. Burns Hicks, as 23-year-old, filed a lawsuit against the school city of Hammond and then Superintendent Lee Caldwell for this discriminatory practice as they had ignored her application and told her Hammond was not ready for a black schoolteacher. Whereas, throughout the lawsuit, Mrs. Burns Hicks was represented by Attorney Richard Hatcher, who would later become Gary, Indiana's first African-American mayor. Whereas, after the lawsuit was settled, Mrs. Burns Hicks was hired as the first African-American schoolteacher within the school city of Hammond and began her 40-year teaching career in 1960. Whereas, Mrs. Burns Hicks taught primarily 1st grade for over 40 years at Maywood Elementary School. Whereas, Mrs. Burns co-authored the first full-day kindergarten program in Hammond, Indiana, instituted a formal reading program into Maywood's full-day kindergarten, and worked in the first head staff program. Whereas, in January of 2022, the school city of Hammond Board of Trustees voted 5-0 in favor of renaming at Maywood Elementary School to Annie Burns Hicks Elementary in honor of the service and dedication exemplified by Mrs. Burns Hicks during her times as a Hammond educator. Whereas, Mrs. Burns Hicks opened doors for other African-American educators and leaders within the City of Hammond as she taught and inspired generations of students and families to be the best they could be in support of their community and making the world a better place. Now, therefore be it resolved by the common council of the City of Hammond that the common council, on behalf of the citizens of the City of Hammond, duly recognize Mrs. Annie Burns Hicks for her contributions as the first African-American teacher within the City of Hammond.
Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, Clerk Golick roll call.
Alexander?
Yes.
Spitali?
Yes.
Vanez?
Yes.
Kalwinski?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Rakels?
Yes.
Warple?
Yes. Let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed.
President Warple, that concludes the reading of the resolutions.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Item number 12, New and Unfinished Business.
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Vanez.
Yes, we have several board appointments that are coming due today, as a matter of fact, and I'm asking for approval of each of these gentlemen. Rich Spitali to a two-year term on the Building Contractors Board. Ron Lubus, a two-year term on the Electrical Board. Jorge Batista for a one-year term on the Electrical Board. And Ron Cato, a two-year term on the HVAC Board. I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded -- motion's been made by Councilwoman Vanez, seconded by Councilman Tyler. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Clerk Golick roll call on the motion to reappoint these board members.
Alexander?
Yes.
Spitali?
Yes.
Vanez?
Yes.
Kalwinski?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Rakels?
Yes.
Warple?
Yes. Let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed. Anybody else have anything on the new and unfinished business? Does anybody else have anything on the new and unfinished business?
Mr. President?
Councilman Kowinski.
Spring is here, and that means opening day for Little League softball, girls softball, and Bay Bruce is upon us. In the 1st District, Hammond Hermits will have its opening day Saturday, April 30th, with the parade starting at 10:00 AM and ceremony -- opening day ceremonies at the park at 11:00 AM. Also, in the 1st District, the Lake Shore Bay Bruce Girls Softball, played at Forsyth Park, will have its parade Friday, April 29th, at 5:30 PM, followed by opening day ceremonies at the park. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Vanez.
There are other leagues throughout the city that are also celebrating their opening day on Saturday, April 30th. The Hammond Optimist Youth Sports will have their opening day at Optimist Field at 10:00 AM. Hessville Little League will have a parade. Lineup begins at 8:30. The kickoff is at 9:00 AM. Their opening day ceremony is at 10:00 AM. Again, that is April 30th as well. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
I highly recommend those tents that you can put the lawn chair in and zip your soft shed in because since I got kicked off the bench on my son's team, it's cold out there.
Yes, it is.
So those tents work good when you zip them up. Does anybody else have anything on the new and unfinished business? Does anybody else have anything on the new and unfinished business? Does anybody else have anything on the new and unfinished business? Hearing none, new and unfinished business is closed. Item number 13, Public Expression. George Stoya, you're up to bat. He declines, and the other one is Lindy -- or I'm sorry, Linda Aguiano?
Linda Aguiano.
Aguiano.
Okay, I haven't been here in a while, but I've been busy behind the scenes. I wanted to acknowledge and recognize Councilman Barry Tyler Jr.'s ordinance prohibiting retail sale of dogs and cats. These animals are very special to me, and I appreciate that. I also want to thank the resolution by Barry Tyler Jr. and Katrina Alexander, recognizing Annie Burns Hicks as the first African-American schoolteacher in 1960. When I was at Bishop Noel and getting ready to transfer to Morton High School, we had a lawsuit by an African-American teacher who wasn't being allowed to purchase a home in the Hessville area. And so that was around 1970, 69, 70. So it's not that long ago. I appreciate what you're doing about that and the reading of the whole resolution out loud. I would also like to acknowledge and recognize local residents who were not a part of any organized group, and this is a committee of just concerned activists and environmentalists who organized a fantastic Hammond Earth Day at Hessville Park, and that was the park I grew up playing in. I went to Our Lady of Perpetual Help, and it was right there. That's where I learned to swim, and it was really exciting to see all these children getting free plants, getting -- making mud balls, which are little balls of dirt and seeds, and learning about the environment. We had over 100 trees that were donated by the Department of Natural Resources, and adults from all over Hammond were very excited about these trees. Some were fruit trees, some were hazelnut trees, pawpaws, all kinds of trees. And we had around 100 or more people attend that event. I was just a volunteer, and as I said, it was not organized by any one group, but it did get the permission from, I imagine, this body to hold that. And I think that it shows in a special commitment by the average person to take care of the environment, to plant more trees, and especially the people in Hessville, they're very concerned about their environment. Lastly, I would just like to make you all aware that I am, as a volunteer, I'm going on a trip to Washington, DC via a luxury bus. And this, that's being facetious. That is with a group called COSECHA, and I'd like you all to be aware of them if you're not. They started on the East Coast in New Jersey, now they have chapters around the country. And they were started by a group of undocumented people. And their focus right now is licenses for all. And you've heard me speak many times about Latino issues and immigrant rights, and this is something that up until 1990 wasn't even an issue. Any undocumented person could get a driver's license, but now they're making all these obstacles. So we're going to DC, and we're going to be meeting with several representatives there. And there are a lot of issues that the immigrants and immigrant community is facing, but they are focusing, COSECHA, C-O-S-E-C-H-A, is focusing on license for all. And one of the big issues is, okay, say you're a parent, and you have to get your kids to school. Well, if that mom is driving without a license because she cannot get a license, guess what? She could get deported because she's breaking a law. If a man is trying to support his family while it's taking years for the paperwork to go through, and he needs a drive to work and he gets stopped, guess what? He could be deported because he's breaking a law by driving without a license. So this is COSECHA's focus for now. I think you're going to hear more about it. I would love in the future if this body would support a resolution in support of that. And that's all my comments for this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. How I entertain a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion's been made. Clerk Golick roll call.
Alexander?
Yes.
Spitali?
Yes.
Vanez?
Yes.
Kalwinski?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Rakels?
Yes.
Warple?
Yes. Motion to adjourn passes. See you all in two weeks.